I'm going to call the committee of the home meeting to order. Mayor.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Jensen.
Here.
Trustee Sack is absent with notice. Trustee Williams.
All right, trustee's in presentation, verse one, trustee Williams. Update number one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many residents have been contacting me, asking about the significant amount of water main breaks. And I was curious myself. I wanted to know if we could, we talked about having a recent update about Lake Michigan water and the infrastructure. And we haven't, we kind of put that off. I'm wondering if we could have that sometime soon and so the residents and the board could be brought up to speed on, number one, the fire hydrants, how many are still broken, how many have been repaired, where we are with the fire hydrants, where we are with the water main breaks. I know our infrastructure is very, very old. But I'm more concerned about the fact that these breaks are happening in mild weather and how the colder weather is going to affect the infrastructure. And I know many residents are still talking about Lake Michigan water and we haven't had a presentation on that probably in 10, 15 years. So what I'm asking, the reason why I asked this on the agenda was to see if we could have either a town hall meeting about the water or add it as an agenda item and allow plenty of time to discuss or have Robinson Engineering or someone back in for a presentation. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Your notion as far as the water main breaks being more, really they happen more in summer than they do, the warmer weather than they do in colder weather. Colder weather, they're free. So usually when it thaws out is when the breaks happen. But yes, that's something we need to put together for another deep dive into whether it would cost, whether it would be prerequisites and requirements to get Lake Michigan water. And it was voted out of the referendum. So it's, it's a binding referendum also. So we can enlighten the residents again, how much it would, it would, I would say estimate how much it would be to bring Lake Michigan water. And then also, when it comes to the water main break, it's a water main break. Unfortunately, no town knows when it's going to happen, but it, it does happen. So that's pressure bound, pipes being a certain age. And then eventually, anything man-made will break sooner or later. But as far as getting a, a town hall for something, have someone to come out. I have been in touch with the young gentleman, with the gentleman that came out years and years ago, those that was on the board, those that know anything about when this happened, I think it was 2011. Talked to, his name was Bud Mason. So he's still around. So I guess a matter of him coming in, getting new, fresh numbers and bringing it to us, that should be a problem.
And Mr. Mayor, you referred to when the ordinance passed to get the Lake Michigan water, it was a binding referendum at the time?
Yeah.
But you do recall that the IEP A said we didn't qualify because of the breaks?
Absolutely.
So I know we also did a leak survey at the time to see whether we qualified. And I don't know if that's something we might want to consider doing that again as well? Just to see, can we identify the leaks before they happen? If that might be, is there a way to identify them? No, I mean a leak, if you know you're going to have a leak. I'm just asking, Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying it's what's going to happen.
I'm saying, I wish, now we had a close call with anyone else.
No, nobody does, but I'm saying, is it possible, since these are the things that we've done in the past? And I don't know if residents understand, we can't just get Lake Michigan water. We have to qualify for it. And we know for a fact how many leaks we had back in 2011. And it could have either increased or decreased since then. I know the leak survey does cost money, so it's something the board would need to talk about. If this is what you want to do, but it's just things I'm asking for the board to consider. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, I remember this all too well when we did do the meetings regarding Lake Michigan water. But one thing I also remember is that we got an increase in our water bill. And that increase in our water bill was supposed to be to go towards infrastructure for the piping, everyone knew piping, so that we could get rid of the leaks, slow down the breaking, so that we could qualify for Salt Michigan water, uh, Lake Michigan water. So my question is, why did our, why did the residents' bills go up? What happened, or was there a special bank account? Or somewhere where the additional funds are being held? Because this has been since 2011. And so again, all of our water bills went up, doubled in fact. And we were told that was to make sure that we can have the monies in order to do the infrastructure to replace piping in the ground. I haven't heard any more since 2011, why our water bills doubled, where the money is, is there a special account? And what's going on with that? So that's what we were told the monies were for. And I'm sure many residents in this village remember that very, very well. The other thing is, I want to know that since I've been in this village, our Public Works Department has been the department that fixed all of our water main breaks. Now, from my understanding, with speaking with different entities in the water department, our employees in our water department are not, are no longer fixing water main breaks. We are calling out Calumet Plumbing and all these other companies to now fix our water main breaks, which is costing, costing us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. What has changed? Except that I can say is the, the director of Public Works, because prior to the director that we have now, all of our directors of Public Works has been able to maintain the integrity of the Public Works Department, where all of our employees in that department were trained and qualified to fix water main breaks. And from my understanding now, the employees that are hired, or has been hired, or is working in our water department, I'm sorry, in our Public Works Department, and they are also working in our water department. And these people do not have the experience or the qualifications to now fix our water main breaks. I want to know what is going on with that situation? Because I've been here 25 years. And in 25 years, I have known for a fact that our Public Works Department has been the ones to fix these water main breaks. And so now it's costing us way too much money. And why aren't these employees qualified to do the work now that we've always done in the past decades? So that's another question that I have. As far as Lake Michigan water, there's also research being, that has been done, that, just in case the residents doesn't understand, we own our own water. So all monies that come into our village belongs to this village, every dime concerning water. So if we need repairs and all of that, we should be able to take care of all of that ourselves. Now when you get, because I've researched with other villages that get Lake Michigan water, some of them are behind in their water bills paying it to Lake Michigan because it is very expensive to have it. I want to know, have we ever looked into getting a filtration system on our water? Have we looked into getting a softener system on our water? We're also, it's time for us now to get our strips back because it's been 13 years since we've had them. You know what, air strippers? Right, it's been 13 years and they're on their last leg. We know that we had to get the air strippers in order to protect our water from all of the contaminants that were in the water. So what have we done as a village? And what research have we done as a village? To see what we can do to upgrade the integrity of our water? To see if we can possibly keep those funds in our own community, in our own village? I am one of those persons that truly believe we shouldn't have to keep going outside of us, outside of ourselves, to always seek something that we can do right here at home? If we would take the time to research different avenues that we can improve our own infrastructure, our own village, our own water, and do things here at home. Other villages are doing it, so I know we can. It just takes someone with that, that leadership ability, someone who has a vision, to make it happen right here in our own backyard. So those are the three concerns that I have. Where's the money that was supposed to go for infrastructure and to replacing pipes that we got charged double for our water since 2011? Why are our own people fixing water main breaks like we've done in decades in the past? And what can we do to upgrade our water system so that we can maintain the integrity and keep the funds right here in our own village? Thank you.
First of all, I don't know who the, I don't know where you got the information from, but the reason why Kayman Plumbing was called out to fix that particular water main break because we couldn't get our people to come out. We tried to call, no answer. And so I was not going to let the water just spear out on its street. We had to do something, we had to get it fixed. I wasn't going to wait for someone to decide to answer their phone. So yes, we had to get an outside company to come out and fix that particular water main break. The second, we're not, okay, are you going to want me to answer, we're going to go back and forth?
We're going to go back and forth.
Oh, we're not going back and forth.
Because that's what they say, it's just a discussion.
No, it's not. That's not, you go back and forth, now you're debating.
Everyone, we are in, I'm not debating.
We're debating, I'm not going to.
No, I'm having a discussion, you're debating.
Do you want me to answer, do you want me to answer the question?
Yes, but I.
Then let me answer the question.
But I have a.
Then let me answer the.
Before you go to the next question, I need to.
I haven't finished this one.
You said the next question.
I haven't finished this one.
Okay, one more.
But I'm not going to debate with you, trustee.
Mr. Mayor, this is not a debate, we are discussing, Mr. Mayor. That's what this, that is what committee meetings are here for.
No, it's not, it's not here to debate.
We are here to discuss these issues that we're talking about. We're here to present and discuss. So my question is, Calumet Plumbing was not just sent out one time. That has been a consistent, that company has been consistently called to our village. I've been looking at the APs, and Calumet Plumbing is on our AP quite a bit and they are extremely expensive. And why is it that we, again, the leadership in that department is very lacking? Because up until now, that we've never had a problem with our employees doing their job, which is coming out to fix water main breaks. So again, why is it that we cannot get our employees to come out and fix our water main breaks as we have done every year since 1960, since 1967? Since the village has been a village? 57, is it 57?
Again.
57.
Again, you, okay. I don't know where you get the information, but I'm not going to sit up here and be back, badger back and forth. I'm trying to answer the question.
So I'm not badgering, I'm just asking a question.
Are you going to let me answer the question? Are you going to let me answer the question?
Sure.
Thank you, please. First of all, and, but I just got to say, yes, they came out for the last water main break because no one would answer.
And please.
A lot of times when Kayman City does come out because mostly if our equipment is down, instead of trying to go someplace else or hope that we can get another person or another rental company to come out, if that happens, we call Kayman Plumbing, they've done work with us before. And honestly, our credit is not that great anymore, it's like it used to be because people are not paying the bills. That's number one. Number two, as far as the bill being doubled, water bill hasn't went up in years. I don't know what year you're talking about, but the garbage bills go up every single year, 3%. Has gone up every single year since 2016 or 16. And that'll happen until 2030 years old, 16 and 20 is 36. And it's going up every year 3%. That was a contract that was voted on back in 2000, as you just got to saying, 16. So that's what's going up is the garbage bills. The sewer bill has gone up, and that was also voted on by the board, to raise that because of the equipment that has to be brought and the additional chemicals that have to be used when we put salt down. Right now, you cannot just put calcium down on the ground, it has to be a chemical. This is mandated by the state. And it was a unfunded mandate that they didn't give us the money to do it, but we had to do it anyway to comply with what they were supposed to, well, comply with what their wishes were because they didn't want the calcium, the chloride and everything else to go down the sewers. This helped dilute that, but it still gave the effect to melt the salt. So that's where that increase came from. Like I said, I hadn't seen an increase in water. It's 750 for a thousand now, I'm trying to think what year that was that that went up, so I'm not sure about that. And air strippers. Today, I just understand that they took their strippers apart and cleaned. That's something that they say, though. They save the village a lot of money for doing that because they have to be cleaned periodically while the calcium and bills up into those air strippers. So it's not like they're outdated, it's honestly, they'll never be outdated because of the equipment that they're made out of. But sooner or later, like I stated before, anything mechanical will break. So right now, to put that out there, that, and I don't understand to even make a comment that they don't know what they're doing or that they have, don't have leadership capabilities or the leadership is bad in the, in the Public Works Department. I'm not going to even address that because I don't see that. If you don't want to come to work, work doesn't stop because you're not going to be there. So.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
But I'm just, I, I, okay, but if you ask, I'm not, okay, go ahead, trustee.
Thank you so much.
You're going back and forth.
Thank you so much. So you said that the air strippers, they, you said they, can you tell me who they are?
Public Works.
So you said Public Works, which is Dante?
Public Works, the department, the workers.
Right, so you got your info from, you got this information from the workers or the Public Works Director, Mr. Dante Jones?
I have pictures of them cleaning the air strippers.
And is there any way that we can get, some type of the trustees can get a report of these?
It just happened today.
Okay, oh, it's just happened, just suddenly happened today since I asked you the question? Okay, that's fine. So is it any way that we can get a report or some type of report showing that today, the people in Public Works dismantled the air strippers, cleaned them, and so our air strippers now are certified to be good for how long now? Because 13.
I don't know, I didn't get that, I didn't get that information. I saw the information of them cleaning their strippers.
Okay, so if we can, I'm asking if the Public Works Department can give us a copy, including our residents? Because we have air strippers specifically to keep our water from the contaminants. And I know that they're 13.
Do you know why air strippers were put in place?
Yes, they're 13, they're 13 years old.
What was the reason why they were put in place?
And that's the life of them, so.
What was the reason why air strippers were put in place?
It's irrelevant at this point.
It's irrelevant.
Because you're saying.
How's that irrelevant? What was the reason why?
Because you're telling, me, a resident, I'm a resident. So you're telling your resident that today, when I ask this question, so all of a sudden today, that Public Works stripped the air strippers, dismantled them, I'm just going by your words, and cleaned them. So I just would like to have a report of this work done because our air strippers are extremely important, of our air strippers being dismantled and cleaned by our Public Works employees, as you're saying. And at that point, if they're the ones that's cleaning them, then we should also have a new date of the integrity and how long our air strippers have now, since they've been stripped and cleaned today, which is what, October the first. Mayor Burgess says that Public Works dismantled, cleaned, stripped the air strippers, and they are now just as they were as brand new. And I think we should have a report on that.
He didn't say that. Do you know where well number three is located?
Yes, I know where all the wells are, sir.
Do you do?
I do, sir.
Tomorrow, why don't you drive by there because they're still sitting out there?
What I'm asking about.
Right by well number three, you can see the components of the strippers sitting out.
When I, when I became a trustee, I did do a.
I'm asking you, I'm talking about.
I did, I did a, a tour of the water.
You're talking about, you said that you want to see. I'm telling you.
No, I didn't say, no, sir, I didn't say I wanted to see something.
Yes, you did.
I said I need a report. I don't want to see.
You can see for yourself.
I need a report. From the people, the professionals, who changed and stripped our air strippers. Because again, this is important to me as the Public Health and Safety Chairperson. I understand the integrity of waters is contingent upon those air strippers and their, their, the quality. So if you're saying it happened today, then we should have a report today somewhere. Mr. Dante Jones, as the Public Works Director, should have a report that he can share with us and our residents that this work has been done and tell us how long or what is the lifeline of our air strippers now? And I'm sure if we're talking about the quality of water and Lake Michigan water, then I don't think that this is a, a question that, that's unreasonable. So that is, that is my request, to see a report of these air strippers being cleaned. And I need to know how long, what their lifeline is as of today. Is that possible, sir?
Are you asking or are you telling?
No, I'm asking, is that, is that possible?
I'm not able to give a report.
No, I'm asking you to give the report. I'm asking for the Director, Mr. Dante Jones, the Director of Public Works. Is that possible that Mr. Jones can give us a, a copy of the report?
Because you're going to keep going back and forth, I told you where to go and.
Listen, I am a resident of the Village of South Village. I do know that the air strippers are integral to the quality of our water. And if you're telling me this today, that they stripped them and cleaned them, I need to see that, I want to know that we all do.
I told you to go by there and see.
We all do, no, I need a report.
Okay, what is that?
I need a report, I'm just, I can say, I need a report. That's all I'm saying, I need a report.
Duly noted.
But is that what you have?
Duly noted.
Mayor Burgess.
Duly, what are you telling me? I'm telling you noted, that's what.
I'm asking you, can Mr. Dante, Mr. Dante.
I don't know, he's not.
You are the mayor of this village. You are the leader of this village, so why are you always telling me what you don't know or what you can't do?
I'm not going to sit here and lie and tell you.
Well, because you just, well, you just lied and said the air strippers were done today.
I lied and said that? I just got to tell you where they were.
I, I'm just.
So you want to argue, that's all you want to.
I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor.
All you want to do is argue back and forth.
Prove what you're saying to me, I need prove, I'm just saying.
I told you to drive over there.
No, I'm, what, that doesn't tell me anything. You, where you go, okay, would you, would you go with me and show me? Would you and Mr. Jones go with me? Would you and Mr. Jones take a trustee to show me the work that was done?
You know where it's at, it's out there.
I'm asking you, the professionals, to take me. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
All right, let's move on. The next item is coming from the Administrator, Mr. Johnson. Update on the meeting regarding the school district's community consolidating school district 168 petition for special use permit to allow for education facility, primary and secondary use of residential district R1 at 1124th and Torrance Avenue.
Quick update, Mayor, thank you. I'm happy to report that on last Wednesday, the zoning Board of Appeals entertained the request from the Consolidated School District 168 and their associated petition to be granted a special use permit for the ultimate acquisition and deployment of the St. James Church to be a school that passed unanimously. In terms of the budget review, we have a budget review that will be open to the public beginning at this Saturday here, 9 o'clock. Public is welcoming. It will be the annual budget review for the 24, 25 fiscal year. That's my report.
All right, sir, thank you. Trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was one resident that had a concern at the zoning board meeting and I asked that we get that answer. Did the school district get back to you on how that would affect the residents' taxes if we were to approve that?
They're going to present that to you when they're scheduled to be on next Tuesday meeting.
Oh, they will present it, okay, thank you.
I prepared them, I told them questions to anticipate. Here's what you need to research in terms of your due diligence to make sure all concerned get the information they need.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the last thing, the clerk, Barbara Campbell.
I, he mentioned the budget review meeting for 24, 25?
Yes.
What about the budgets that we have not done already for?
They're gone, I mean, how much, you're going to do a budget for something that's not here?
No, we, well, what happened to them?
Those are called appropriations, I mean, they're, you cannot enact a budget that no longer exists.
You sure we can, we can, we can go, we can go back and discuss?
The one that's going to be presented is the one for this year and next year, fiscal year.
Okay, I would like to also break forth the budget that we did just last year that was presented to the trustees from the Finance Department. I would like to go over that budget as well.
I don't know what, where you'll get that from.
We still have it.
Oh, you do?
We do, that's the budget that you gave us. That's the budget.
That's from 23, 24?
23, 24.
I'm sorry, yeah, 23, 24? Did you have that budget?
I do.
Okay, well, right now.
You had it too.
Right now, what we're going to go over this Saturday is this budget. The one that we have, this one.
Well, I would like to make sure that we have the 23, 22, 23.
But we're not going over that budget. We're not going over.
Oh, so Mr. Mayor, you, so every year we could just skip budgets and don't have budgets and just jump to the budgets?
This is what you're going to do for the rest of the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking a question.
I'm telling you, we're going over 24, 25.
What about, what about in the audits, what are we going to do, just skip all the four years that we're behind?
I said we're going to skip anything.
Well, yeah, you just told me we're going to skip 22, 23, 23, 24. You just told me we're going to skip all those budgets and jump to. So what about the audits, are we going to do the same thing, just skip all the four years that we're behind? What are we going to do about that? I'm just asking, what are we going, so you, so you just spend money?
I don't have to answer the question.
You just spend money.
Who just spent money?
You, the village.
Oh, do you? Me, I don't, I don't spend anything.
Spend money. Then why aren't we doing, why are we so far, why are we four years behind in our audits and almost three years behind in budgets?
What are you, why is this, this is not what we're talking about right now.
We are talking about budgets.
Don't we talk about the budget review for next fiscal year?
It's talking about budgets.
Okay, well, I'm not.
Mr. Mayor, you never have answers for any questions.
No, thank you.
And these are very, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be able to attend Saturday, I have a funeral. But what I would like to say is, I don't see this board approving a budget for 24, 25 until we get some type of figures on what was spent in 22, 23, and 23, 24. We've been asking for a budget to actual figures for two years. And until we find out what's been spent in the last two years, I'm not saying we need to review a budget from the past two years because we didn't have one. But we do need to know what was spent each year, 22, 23, 23, 24, before we can move on with a 24, 25 budget. So I won't be here for the budget review, but I would like the board to have some type of synopsis of what happened in the past two years. We can't, like trustee Burns said, we can't, this can't act like those two years didn't exist. They did exist. Money was spent, and we need to know where and why, because the board has no clue. And I can't see passing a budget, me personally, until I know what's happened in the past two years.
So you're saying that you don't think this board would pass the budget?
I said me personally, sir.
Oh, did you just say?
I said me personally, I said the board should be made aware of what's happened in the past. in the past two years, but I personally cannot see passing a budget for twenty-four, twenty-five without knowing where the last two years where the money went. Okay, so I'm sorry, I won't be here this week, but that's only because I have a funeral, otherwise I wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, Madam Clerk, Mills and, Mills in the meantime, top of...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do want to share this information with the boards for consideration. However, I would be remiss if I just did not apologize profusely for the capture of some of my behavior at last Tuesday's meeting. I was provoked. However, I don't want to live in the past at this point, but I thought that I would be remiss if I did not say to each one of you who witnessed it, who saw the news and videos, that I do apologize for my actions, and I promise I will attempt to control myself much better, can promise. But all I can say is I'll do my best to try. Let's move on. Now, Mayor and trustees, you know that, um, we are in partnership with, um, the Villages Preventing Council of Park Forests, well, the cluster of Chicago Heights, which include Chicago Heights, Park Forest, and the Village of South Village. And I've shared with you on many reports, the number of resources that attend each one of those meetings and they present, and we want to do this, we want to do that in the villages, and at last week's meeting, Mills in the meantime presented, and they purposely stated during the open meeting that they would like to come to South Village as they, they travel from one village or community to the next, and, um, they have these pop-ups. They call themselves Filling the Food Gap with Nourishment and Dignity. I communicated with the gentleman today at our meeting, it's, he would like to do a pop-up here in the village. It's not every week, it's not every month. Their focus is to enhance food sustainability in as many communities as possible. So we looked at a date, February the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, that they do a pop-up here. They bring in all of the food, and the food that they bring in is fresh food. It was very clear, we said, we offer no canned goods at all. Every ingredient is completely fresh. And, uh, they bring in the volunteers, as I say, they bring in food. All they need from the village is us to help promote it to our residents, but then, because it is going to be in February, unlike sometimes when they are able to, um, grab and gavenize themselves on the outside, they will need to be on the inside as they're unloading the trucks and everything, and they put everything in a very nice little bag. If you look in the packet of materials that I presented to you this past Friday, you will see some of their staff and how they operate. You will see the bags that they package the food in. Um, when I spoke to the gentleman today, he stated that if we were to do February and February is Black History Month, then they would make certain that the foods that they bring in in February are things that, for the most part, African Americans really enjoy eating. We're talking fresh greens, fresh tomatoes, um, and foods along that line. They are not asking for any major commitment on our part other than a location that does not compete with foot traffic or other operations. They'd like a location where the food handles visitors, vehicles does not share the traffic pattern. They want permission to stand up their sign to say Mills in the meantime, but then they also bring a tent or a canopy that they serve from under. Um, a couple of six-foot tables, folding chairs. The only piece that I see that they would want that, I'm not certain if we are capable of providing, who knows, maybe I can communicate with Public Works if this is a goal and everybody approved, hand trucks and/or rolling carts. I'm not certain how much of that we have, but we have the garbage paddy bins, we have the dumpster station. I, I foresee them being right on the side of the senior center. And the only, one other thing that I think that would be beneficial is if our, um, ESDA can help direct traffic. Other than that, there is no cost to us, the times of operation. Uh, someone would need to be here, and I'm certain that would be me, to welcome them in, and that would be at eight o'clock in the morning. So they do their staging from eight o'clock in the morning into ten in the morning, and then they start distribution right at ten, and they go until they've exhausted their supply. So I presented to you in your package on Tuesday their mission, the history that they have, what their purpose, I even shared with you a copy of the food that they will be presenting, which I thought was really very interesting. And then I also provided you a copy of their production as they're in the midst of distributing to our residents. He said, he stated that, you know, it's not every month event, but it's possible that if some of the other villages or cities do not take advantage, it's possible that they can make two visits in twenty-twenty-five, but there were no promises. I'm not, I don't think that we would need a resolution, because we've had pop-ups right out front in the past without the resolutions. All we would really need, I think, would be for each of you to say, yes, it's something that we can move forward with. And, Mr. Mayor, that completes what I had. I will entertain questions if you or anyone else have them. Thank you.
Trustee Williams.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've been waiting for Mills in the meantime. We have time, a long time. Thank you so much. This is a great organization. I can't wait for them to come. I appreciate you reaching out to them.
Thank you.
You know that. Okay, you can put it on the agenda, please. We can do more though.
Thank you, sir.
All right, public comments. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the Village of South Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up to three minutes and may engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttal. I will, I will respond to all questions once all questions and comments have been concluded. Please state your name when you come up.
Ready?
Oh, no, we need to turn your mic off. Trustee, uh, you got it, please?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Judith Houston. I'm here again because I want to know what Public Works is not doing. Why Public Works is not doing there to be about, um, mowing down the water catch or the flood field. I was in here in, um, June, and they came in July and mowed, and then they came in August and mowed. They haven't mowed since August the eleventh, and that weed that's growing outside of the village hall is growing down there and it's spreading. And I'm not the only one affected. It's a, it's a mag, uh, ma, a breeding ground for mosquitoes because it holds the water because the roots are so thick. It's spreading, and my neighbor got down in the flood field, um, and job. So I don't know why they're, I've talked to every Public Works guy that comes down here. And, you know, they all say, well, they'll talk to somebody, and I've tried calling, no response. And I'm getting really frustrated because I've got a fence. If that continues to grow and gets up above my fence, I'm not gonna be able to go down the side or around the back of it. So I'm just here to bring it to your attention again. Like I said, it's, I'm not the only one affected by it, because luckily this summer we haven't had any mosquitoes. But otherwise, it's, it's gonna, it's bad. So I appreciate your...
Ma'am, before you leave, could you give me the address on where Eric has located because...
Uh, down on East two, East two hundred and twenty-third, just before you get to Murphy. It's a water catch. I call it a flood field. And that where, and the, the administration prior to this one started letting that stuff grow up because they didn't mow. And then they have been mowing it, and then they stopped mowing it, and now it's spreading.
Okay. Okay. Got it?
Mr. Mayor, we as Salties out here in this village, we have enough stuff going on out here. We don't need people that does not live here in this village coming up here to start a mess. We got enough mess going on out here as ourselves, as Salties out here. And then people come up here, and then they speak about things that's not even going on out here. You know, at one time, we were saying it wasn't our business as residents as to what was going on out here in this village. But I think that should be passed on to the people that do not live here in this village. When they come up here and they start that mess up in here and talking with people and talking about this village and want to get into the business of this village. If you don't live here, I don't feel you should. I know it's public comment, and people come up and they can say whatever they want, but if you don't live in this village, you shouldn't be speaking about the business that's going on here in this village. That is your opinion, you should keep that to yourself. Again, we as the Salties here in this village got enough mess going on, and we don't need outsiders coming up in here trying to tell us what we should be doing up here in this village. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, next question. Dr. Saltie?
Sir, that was, I don't understand. I, I would assume a Saltie is a Salt Village resident. Could, could you explain what a Saltie is? I'm not getting that question.
What a, what a Saltie is? A Saltie is a, is a resident that live here in Salt Village.
A Salt Village resident?
We're Salties. That's what I talk about, the Salties.
S-A-U-K-I.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a resident of Salt Village.
I think the mic is out there.
I am a resident of Salt Village twenty-one years. Can't hear you. Can you...
Hello, hello, hello.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a resident of Salt Village.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but you lost at least twenty seconds. Can we just reset your time for you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, will you ready?
I'm ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm an official of, running for Salt Village. I've been on the twenty-nine, Bernard Harris. I'm also, uh, elected official on the school board, the consolidated school district, Washington. I have two concerns. One concern is I've been up here, uh, numerous times talking about the, uh, who is responsible for the trees, the one, the other side of the sidewalk, that the, uh, the roots is overtaking my property, maybe trying to find some water or drainage or whatever it is to dig down into. So do I got, I'm not talking about water, I'm talking about maybe the sewage or you flush the toilet, whatever, shower, whatever. So it's finding, the roots is finding a way to get to our property. So food is responsible for that. And also on two-two-five in, in Brookwood, we need speed, um, thing or whatever, they bypassing the, uh, stop sign, and somebody is going to shift it in there. So, but first of all, I want to know who is responsible for the trees, what tree roots on my property. If it's me, then I gotta say something. If it's you guys, it's gonna happen, because it's tearing the sidewalk and everything. That's it.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Erica Lewis. I am with the Office of Inspector General, John Howard the Fourth. And I have only three minutes, so I'm hoping that you guys pay really good attention because I have a couple of questions that need to be answered and that I'm very disturbed by. So, one is the financials. Every Tuesday, it's being asked, how are we, as a resident, as well as a OIG, how are you operating and don't have a budget for three years? That never been answered for me or for any of the residents here. Second, you also have people on your staff that's unqualified. And one, I will present evidence, facts. The financial director is not here, the acting financial director is not here. Also, on eight-two of twenty-twenty-three, you stated the village is in the black and has a credit rating of an eight minus, okay? And on January of twenty-twenty-four, you provided a budget that showed that the general fund was in a deficit, meaning a negative, okay? Over a million dollars before the water fund transfer. What is the status of that now? Or you can answer after. Next, again, you have a person on your team that is actually in a federal lawsuit pending with the Salt Village, Renee Lewis. Are you aware of that? The Salt Village lawsuit...
You have one minute left.
Is basically her refusing a resident. Secondly, again, we're back to the budget and the audit. So every Tuesday, I'm definitely going to present more evidence, and if any of you all would like to see any of this evidence, it's public records, and you can definitely talk to myself or John Howard the Fourth, and we, we'll provide you with any of the evidence that you need to see. This, we have one common denominator. That common denominator is where is the money and where is it going? You're operating without an, without a budget for three years. You're operating without an audit for four years. So how can you proceed to the next audit of twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five? You cannot. You cannot do that. And if anybody have any questions on the left side or on the right side, I would be glad to answer any questions for you, because you may not understand financials, but you need to know where your money is going. You need to find out why things are not going to pass.
Time is up.
Um, since I just became behind that person who is a part of the OIG, that was not a part of what I was presenting today. But since it was done right before me, I guess I have questions. And that one question is, which was never answered before, is that if the... if the OIG is an organization or the Salt Village OIG that the trustees appointed, who has now found themselves empowered to come to this meeting to tell residents about what is not there, what is inappropriate and what is not appropriate? Are they appropriate? Is my question. Uh, we were advised by our corporate authority in this meeting that that was something that you should not have been doing as trustees. Now I hear them giving public reports on what is wrong. Somebody needs to clear up some stuff for me. But now to the stuff that I had prepared to present today. The media show is over. Now that you have exposed our troubles here in Salt Village, what's next? Question number one. Number two, trustee Seth Ann Williams, in your statement that there was has been a misappropriations of funds, and that was your reason that you have an OIG investigation. Well said on the national television. But you did not say that your investigation was being done by the Salt Village OIG. So most of the residents that heard and saw your national media presentation assumed that you really did go to the state of Illinois office of investigation of the inspector general. With all these funds that you keep talking about are misappropriated, when are you all gonna really put in a federal? When you're gonna put in a federal claim or report or a state report? Because your people getting up here talking don't mean nothing to me and most of the other residents because these are people that you appointed, that you brought in here, that have your favoritism in their mind. To the mayor and to the clerk, I am sorry for your belitterating in the midst of the mess last week because Salt Village, uh, I've known both of you before this political, uh, entanglement. And I know that both of you have invested well in this community. And so I would like to say that I will apologize for whatever was done, whatever was said, so that you will know that other citizens really do value what both of you have given to this town in Salt Village. I've been here. I've lived here. Still do. Plan on going nowhere. My last statement is I hope that this level of disrespect and dysfunction that we have among the public officials have played in the A.D.
I'll be back next week. That's no problem.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Turner. Um, I'm really just really discouraged over this whole, um, caboodle. I mean, my sister in Chicago sent me the video of what happened here at the last meeting. And what really is ironic is that when someone in the public makes a statement or says something, the first thing is we're gonna throw you out. You better calm down. And then what do our trustees and our mayor do? They embarrass us as the public, okay? Now, the same questions is being asked about the finances. And no questions is being answered. Nothing is being brought forth. So we keep on coming here asking the same questions, wanting a response, and we getting nothing. And when you ask questions, we'll select them on the question that we ask. And then when we get the question answers back, he just asks us which ones he wants to ask, answer to, okay? So you can ask three questions, but you're only gonna get one answer. And you have no rebuttal, so whatever he says is, that's just what the way it is. The thing about it is, people, no matter who investigates, somebody needs to investigate. I don't care if it's the state, the federal, the Salt Village. Somebody needs to answer the question. I don't understand. If you have nothing to hide, put the cards on the table. Simply, simple, simple. Put them on the table.
John Howard Ford, OIG. I didn't plan to come up here today. I was supposed to sit and be quiet. Listen, I'm gonna be here every week possible. And I said this before, uh, there is a twenty-four hour number to call for any questions. Someone's gonna answer the phone. My team just wants to get to the truth, and we will. And there are already outside resources that are available to us that we're using. And I can't go into detail about that. But unfortunately, there will be more media here, okay? Because there are some people here that were asking about me. And I said a week ago, look at yourself in the mirror. And believe me, the agencies know about your past. Know about your criminal history. They know what you're doing with the state funding. They already know this. And I don't want to say too much today. But again, any questions, it doesn't have to be just every week here on the mic. Seven zero eight, eight eight eight, zero three one seven. Okay, I have a D.C. phone number. You can use that too. And remember, one of my team members is a resident. For someone that says something about Salties, they are a national resident that cares about Salt Village. So I'm gonna put this down and people, call my number, ask me questions directly. The number, seven zero eight.
Hold on, wait. One, seven zero eight.
Eight eight eight, zero three one seven. You can file complaints. You can report anything. There's things going on here, going on here that I just found out about that no one knows about. It's gonna be, oh, I gotta listen a minute. Oh, okay. How much more time do I have? Okay, so I was told not to say anything that they like I said. But people, there's people that are in positions that are not supposed to be in positions. I don't want to solve anything here. I want to solve everything in court. And.
David Smith, resident. Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions. First and foremost, I'm curious because the residents have asked me, has trustee Coleman reported his new residency status to the clerk? As the OIG stated, there's a lot going on that people are unaware of. Number two, there was a very important meeting that was scheduled last night, a committee meeting regarding pay raises for elected officials. And unfortunately, it was rescheduled at the very last minute. I just so happened to notice that there was no agenda posted Saturday, which would have been the deadline to notify the residents for the meeting. So I want to know if there could be some sort of a policy instituted to notify residents and people that want to come out when the committee member, or the committee chairperson, I should say, decide to cancel their meeting. Because there was a lot of people here last night that wanted to hear and see what was going on in the discussions about these pay raises. And it was just canceled. They were standing outside in the dark, and then they start calling around. Next, uh, regarding the pay raises. Trustee Aretha Burns brought that up and said, these, uh, these pay raises, they won't affect me. Well, now they will. All of this money that you want to raise five hundred percent increase, it seems like you're doing it for a reason. Maybe you're chasing the money for the wrong reasons, for purpose. And I don't appreciate that as a resident. Don't pay my taxes with your taxes.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, and thank you for your courtesy as always. You are very, very professional, Inspector General. And you all have no, you all have no credibility. No credibility at all. Your financial history is trash. You were evicted in two thousand twenty-two, a couple of years back. Felon, multiple convictions. And I will say this because I bring my receipt to the right hand to the left. You can see me after the meeting. You lied in your police report. You were not sworn in. Once we can overlook, but on several different avenues, you lied. You lied. It's real simple. It's real simple. And again, I have my receipts. Everybody can see me after the meeting. And where did it start from our Office of Inspector General? Where did it start with the Office of Inspector General? And these are the people that you want to pay six figures to? These are the people that you want to pay six figures to?
Time is up. Time is up. Thank you. Audience, please. Audience, please. I'll ask one more time. I'll ask one more. I'll let, ma'am, if you want, ma'am, if you want to go back and forth, I'm asking you one more time. Now I'll ask you to leave. Because you're not, we're going back and forth with someone that's on the call here. Please don't leave. I'm asking you. Okay, that's all I'm saying. Not going back and forth.
You ready? Jeffrey Burns, resident of twenty-five years. It's mighty funny that, uh, we've been had people, uh, who did live here getting up talking, and no one said anything about people who didn't live here getting up talking. Now that a resident get up and then talk, now they question her. Whether or not she lives here.
Why are you doing it? Why are you doing it? Thank you. Please stop. Oh, you don't know what's going on? Because you're talking. No, you're not. You're talking. You're making statements. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Now you're lying. You did talk. Oh, my God. Don't, don't bring him here. He gotta do that. Would you please stop, trustee? Trustee, would you please stop? Let me mess it. Would you please be quiet? Let the person talk. You're talking now. You're still talking. You're still talking. Who you talking to? Oh, okay. That's what we're talking about. Deco. You got starts at home. You don't want to listen? How you expect him not to listen to you? Like she did. Like she did. Open up. Would you be quiet?
What about trustee Johnson? What about trustee Johnson, trustee Brown?
Point of order. Point of order. Point of.
Now you're gonna get decored if somebody keeps talking.
I'm not talking.
Point of order. Point of order.
You need to talk to the person next to you. That's what you're talking to. Person next to you. That's me, man. Go ahead, Tom. Sorry. Go ahead.
Let me know when you're ready. All right. Jeffrey Burns, resident of twenty-five years. As I said, uh, now all of a sudden, when people show up and start speaking out about the finances and we not getting no answers, now people are concerned about who lives here, who doesn't live here. Steve LaRocque been here for Lord knows how long. Nobody say nothing about this man. Don't make people to get up talking about Salt Village business. Now that the OIG people are here, who actually lives in Salt Village? In case you wasn't aware, if you do your background check, you would know they live in Salt Village. And, uh, again, my question is always remain the same. Who's responsible for the audits? How come the audits is not done? How come we haven't any bank recs done? When are they going to get done? How can we discuss a twenty-four, twenty-five budget when we don't know anything about twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four? We just can't jump over those years and get to twenty-four, twenty-five? We don't know anything about the last two, uh, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four? Also, I'd like to have a copy of the information that you said you have, Mr. Smith. Also, let me add to the record, uh, David Smith also put up on Facebook about Anthony Finch being a liar. But what he never did address, if Anthony Finch is lying, Anthony Finch stood right here two weeks ago and said he will take a lie detector test if the mayor is willing to take a lie detector test. So my next question is, ma'am, would you be willing to take a lie detector test? Because Sonia Douglas lost her case, if you're not aware. So Sonia Douglas, the, uh, human resource person that they released, who contract had expired two years ago when they released her, last April, once they found out her contract expired. But the mayor keeps putting on accounts payable, trying to pay this woman, and her, uh, bills is up to ninety-nine thousand dollars. So, but no one's concerned about the mayor keep trying to pay Sonia Douglas this money that she's not owed. So now that her case has been thrown out. Okay, so Anthony Finch had an insurance bond. So my next question is, how come we have not gone after his insurance bond? So, uh, supposedly the money that he stole can't be recovered, which I think is around seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh, supposedly the money that he stole can't be recovered, which I think is around seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh, supposedly the money that he stole can't be recovered, which I think is around seventy-eight thousand dollars. Thank you.
Ms. Charles Sterling. Uh, Mr. Mayor, for the past three years, we've been coming here. We've been talking about the audit, the budget. We've heard money passed from this person to that person and such, such. My only question is, if this has been going on, this mismanagement, money being stolen for these past few years that I've been coming here, why hasn't a forensic audit been done? We had one in twenty nineteen. I'm not sure of the results of that. But it would be good to, if the trustees or whoever has the majority here to just request a forensic audit. A forensic, a extensive forensic audit. It go through, check everything financial.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Johnson. And I don't know anything about the budget, but I'm here for another reason. Uh, I'm a landlord. I was a resident of Salt Village since nineteen ninety-two. And I would like to know why the tenant, um, the water. The tenant can stay in the village, in the home. the tenant can stay in the village, in the home, and they're not responsible for the water? So I would like to know, can the water get cut off? We have tenants that have a three thousand dollar water bill. And then they pass it on to the landlord. And I'm about to move back into the village. And I have a next door neighbor that has a junkyard in front of her home. Been trying to get her out for years, years and years. I tried to sell my home, couldn't sell my home because of that. And I would like to know some answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of you.
All right, let me try to answer some of these, some of these comments, and I'll address them as the resident, I don't think she's here anymore, for two hundred and twenty-third street. I'm going to find out about that one tomorrow. Because a lot of time they came motos field because they're still saturated. I could just go down there, they got, if somebody take it back out. But I'm going to find out that they can put what they call a sling bore in there. It's an arm that stretches out and go then cuts. It doesn't cut it off, but it cuts it down, so I'm going to see if we can do something about that. The speed bumps on two hundred and twenty-fifth, the gentleman was correct, he did, we did, he did break up before. And I think we're still waiting on the speed bump to come in because we ordered some more, because we use the ball, the speed bump that we have. And that tree, if it's an impairment that pushed up the sidewalk and it's on the park side, we have to look into that. Because if that's doing that, then I don't want that to impede the heightening and everything. So I think I know what this property is located, and I also want to look into that tomorrow too. Anything dealing, anything dealing with OIG? I'm not going to comment. Because OIG has taken me and a few other people to court. So right now, it's under litigation. And it's in court, I left the courts, I'm letting it fall because I'm not going to say anything. I'm sure I probably have to appear, but right now I have no comment for none of that, those comments from the OIG that claimed that they're supposed to be hired. There was one good thing that oh, the resident that talked about the water being cut off. If the tenant owes, or anyone owes at that address that much money, that water should be shut down. So it's, I don't know which address, if you're at the end of the meeting, if you can stick around and give me the address, I can look it up myself, but right now I don't know. But if there's anything that's old, and it's been old, it's old that much, I don't care, but if it's the tenant or the owner, if they owe a lot, the water should be, it should be terminated, should be taken off. And then I want to say that someone beat me to it, a resident. But I was asking for forensic. I'm going to formally ask, bring it before the board to have a forensic audit done, since everyone feel that money's missing or whatever the case may be, we can find it out. We had a forensic audit done a few years ago, and it was nothing foul to be, any money to be mismanaged. But that was years ago. We can try it again and have the forensic audit done. And I'll bring it to the board so they can vote it out. And, or not vote it out, but I'll just bring it up to the board to to have a forensic audit done as soon as possible. If there's, if there is a a committee meeting that was held and it was canceled, it should be something that should be stated at the at the rep, at the interest of the village. So I'm just saying to the trustees, if you have any meeting that's scheduled for a certain time and you cancel it, you should put a council notice out there. You can put council across the notice that you have, but it should be something. People come and then they see that that particular meet that was supposed to be held has been canceled, there should be a notification there. So that was just oversight, I guess, but that's something that should be done. And you don't want people to come out and, well, they're going to be out already. They're coming out, but to wait and thinking that the meeting's going to start and it hasn't, that's another thing to know. Okay. That being said, I'm going to go with comments by the trustee, I'm going to start with trustee Johnson. Okay, trustee Carter.
Thank you. I just want to go with what Dave Field was saying about residents, but this is how we run somebody in here last week, a couple of people, think one of us is white. Once we get outside, I'm sorry. Okay, once we get outside, one of the people he run with him walked up and to relay things. So there was going to be a stuff outside and everything like that. So the person is not a village resident. And I would think that person should come back up in there. Because anything can happen out there, anybody could get hurt. So don't have a name, but she did come up there and comment. So that's all I have, but somebody could get hurt.
Trustee Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Soft Talk was released in September, a little bit later than what I would have liked, but I wasn't getting articles. So I did put something together, but I have a few more that I'd like to include. It never got on the website, I had asked her to get on the website, it never did. I don't know who I'm supposed to talk to about putting things on the website. Because we don't have agendas or anything else on the website, so we need to find out who is in charge of the website right now. So I'm going to put another Soft Talk out tomorrow to include some of the early October events that are happening. If anybody wants to get a copy of the Soft Talk, they can email me, my, my village email has been out for two weeks, I can't access it or use it. But my personal email is D L W one six three three at AOL dot com. I will email you your own copy. The blood drive, the next blood drive is October twenty-sixth from nine to one at the library. There's a critical shortage for blood. I'm asking if you can't donate, who do you know that can? We would love to see some young people come out and make a difference. One donation can save up to three people's lives. And versity keeps the blood donations within the communities. So they don't send them outside of our area. So I'm begging everyone, please, if you can't donate yourself, there's reasons why people can't donate. But can you try to find somebody who can? As I said Saturday, I wish I could be here for the budget meeting, but I have a funeral. But either way, I don't see a budget passing until we get some information on the past two years. As far as paying the bills, Mr. Mayor, you made a statement a few minutes ago about we are not paying the bills. And if you mean we, being the trustees, that's not true. We pay the bills as they hit the accounts payable. The question is, do we get to see the invoices? Do we know what we're paying? Nine times out of ten, when you try to come in to see the invoices, I was given a one hour window per week that I could review the invoice invoices. And if that's the hour I have to pick up my grandchildren from school, I can't see the invoices. I don't think that's fair. I think the trustees should have total access to the invoices. As is stated in your affidavit to the court, that the trustees have access from eight AM to five PM, five days a week. We do not, we do not. And I really don't feel comfortable passing an accounts payable on invoices I have not seen. But if you don't pay the vendors, as the mayor has said before, people will stop doing business with us. But if you don't see the invoices, how do you pay the vendors? It's a vicious circle. It's not a good position to be in. So our litigation attorneys, our attorneys in general, we're not paying our attorneys. And it's not because the trustees aren't paying them. Last accounts payable, we had two attorneys on the accounts payable. They were not paid. There was an emergency urgent, got to pay sixty-three thousand dollars for AIC. He made, there was a consensus call made to the trustees, we've got to pay this, it's an emergency. That's our IT company. And like I said, I haven't had an email for two weeks. So I agree, okay, it's urgent, there's a situation. I said, but Mr. Mayor, we have lots of invoices that haven't been paid yet. Particularly our litigation attorneys. This village is involved in so many litigation, so much litigation. If our litigation attorneys walk away today, it's going to cost this village hundreds of thousands of dollars to get new attorneys on board, get them adjusted to the case. It's just going to be a mess. We could possibly lose some court action because we failed somehow to appoint a new attorney in time on a case that's happening. So when someone says we don't pay the bills, when I said to the mayor, I said, Mr. Mayor, you didn't fulfill your promise. You didn't pay these attorneys like, I said, I would pay AIC if you paid the attorneys. And guess what? He said, well, I got to see if we have the money first. One of the attorneys that is still owed money, we bounced a check on him in January. Twenty-one hundred dollar check. It's still outstanding. And we owe him fifty thousand dollars today. So before we say we don't pay the bills and we don't know if we have the money, the forensic audit, absolutely. But you know what you need for finance, for a forensic audit? Financial records, bank statements. That's what you need to do for a forensic audit. We did a forensic audit before, we know all about it. Yeah, they didn't find anything, okay. Because they take, even just like a regular auditor, they look at what you already put together yourself and they try to find if there's any irregularities. But we don't have anything that we put together ourselves. So how can they do a forensic audit? This is a serious situation. We talk about the audits every week. And people say, why do you keep beating that dead horse? Because it's a dead horse. How are we going to go back on four years of records? How are we going to do four years of bank recs, four years of audits? And now you want to pass a budget for twenty-four, twenty-five when we don't know how much money we spent in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four? Matter of fact, a little while ago, they wanted us to start a brand new budget fiscal year, starting in January, so we could forget about the last eight months, like it didn't happen. And our board fortunately said, no. We're not going to act like that didn't happen, it did happen. So where is the money from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four? We're not going to pass the budget until we know where that money was spent. Do we want a forensic audit? Absolutely. Are we, are we drowning in litigation? Absolutely. Is it embarrassing? Absolutely. But think about how this embarrassment was created and who should you be pointing the finger at? So lastly, I'd like to say, we're hiring people with our contract. We're paying people without a contract. I've asked for the cleaning company contract a number of times, I'm not getting it. I've asked for bank statements, I'm not getting it. We've got a preferential payment plan going on. AIC got paid, it was an emergency. But we got lawyers that are handling millions of dollars worth of litigation, and we're not paying them. And guess what? They're all threatened to withdraw. So when you hear a board report, one's already put a notice to withdraw. So when you hear a board report that said that your village attorney, the attorney that's been handling this case or that case is withdrawn, it's true, and it's going to cost you money. Because now we got to get a new attorney to come in and get caught up on those cases. So preferential treatment with employees and preferential treatment with vendors is never a good thing. But when you say they ain't paying the bills, who's that? Thank you.
Trustee Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Early, in the middle of the summer, I think it was either the finance director or the VA boasted of having a six million dollar that the village was six million dollars in the black. And at the same time, we're not paying our bills. Well, I guess, if I didn't pay my bills, I probably would have about six million dollars by now too. Okay, but that's just an observation. Yeah, do the math, right? Okay. I don't know, it might have been me that had the council meeting. And I did have to cancel the meeting yesterday. There was an emergency and when emergency happened, you know, you don't have time to post, put a stamp on a notice. But by the way, I didn't even put a notice up. So technically, there was no meeting to have. Okay? And one of the reasons why I had to cancel was I was totally exhausted. For one of the residents who asked about my residency in the village, I closed Thursday on the home. And you all, I don't wish to moving on anyone. Moving is no joke. You got stuff you don't, don't know you have. But it was crazy, you know, and I am still tired. Okay? But to the resident who's so concerned about me not being a resident in the village, to them, well, there you are, okay? Here's my last observation. A lot of stuff jumps off in these, in these meetings. And they do it so often. But I find one thing that's common in almost all of the time that these jump offs, you know, these altercations, these meet me outside and me, you know, calling your names. I find this one thing I see that's common. It's usually done or it jumps off by a spouse of either a trustee or the mayor. We got spouses here maybe, you know. We have one spouse that is here every single meeting since I've been here. Maybe if we just, maybe some of the spouses should take a, you know, take a vacation from here and just stay at home. Take care of your home. Okay? Stay at home, make a home. So the trustees or the mayor can have a home to come to. Which reminds me, my wife is at home now, and I can't wait to get out of here. Okay, now, all right, that's all I have to say.
Trustee Burns?
Thank you. It's good to laugh. Laugh is like medicine, you know. I appreciate everyone that comes up. Some of us are serious and passionate, we always have someone to break the ice. So thank you for that, trustee Carter. And congratulations to your new home. And I appreciate you staying right here in South Village. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. That's, that's very refreshing. We've had quite a few residents come up this evening talking about different things that's going on in there with their homes, speed bumps and overgrown grass and weeds and everything else. From water bills being three thousand dollars. That's almost unimaginable. Where in the world is the water department? How are we allowing these runaway trains in our village in every part of maintenance, our maintenance department, our water department, our finance department? Every single department in this village under the mayor's administration is like a runaway train. There's no accountability, the work is not being done. I mean, in every single department, every one. I mean, in every single department, every one. And we have a right to know, and we have a right to ask questions. And I don't think that we should be taunted or laughed at or made fun of, because we do as residents. So the mayor, one of the things that he did speak of is that our equipment isn't working. Why isn't our equipment working? I'm sure that it costs less to repair than it costs to keep bringing these people from the outside to fix our water main breaks. That's costing us forty, fifty thousand dollars a pop. And we don't have money? There's equipment, new equipment missing from our public works department? So there's no inventory being taken? I mean, every department is just off the rails, every one. We have trustees that's speaking of people stepping in people's faces. I see audience members that's being attacked by either a trustee or, as trustee Carter said, a spouse. Every week, a spouse from this side of the room is always attacking someone on that side of the room, every week, without fail. And now we have trustees attacking our residents, without fail, and this is happening every week. We have, and because my name is always called, we have Francie Anderson, we have Mr. David Smith, we have Ms. Michelle Sterling, and we have Ms. Jessica Riqueal, Rizil. And I'm saying these names because I've got literature that these people are running for office. These people are running to be your elected officials. But every week, they condemn us for asking, "Why are we four years behind in the audit?" These people that want to be your elected officials are condemning us for asking, "Why are we two and almost three years behind in the budget?" These people who want to be your elected officials are condemning us from trying to make the mayor and trustees who don't care accountable for our tax-paying donors. But they want to be your elected officials.
Stop.
That, these are, see what I mean?
Would you stop?
My point, my, she had an opportunity to speak, it was her turn, and she said, "No comment." Now that I'm speaking, now that I'm speaking, this is how these people behave. And they want to be your elected officials. It is a joke. So remember these names, David Smith, Francie Anderson, Michelle Sterling, and Jessica are trying to get elected to be in these seats, and they haven't asked one question about the finances. They haven't asked one question about why our water main breaks are not being repaired by all people. They haven't asked one question, you all, not one, about the issues and the concerns and the problems in this village, but they want to run it? We don't need another Virgins of Virgins, we don't need that. We don't need no more Virgins, no more Virgins of this. We've had this for eight years. And what have we got for eight years of this mayorship? Absolutely nothing. And we don't need no more Virgins of Virgins. No more. No more of that. So, yes. If the elected officials have not gotten a raise in South Village in seventeen years, yes. Whether I benefit or not, it's not the issue. We need living wages increases like everyone else. I have to leave every other Tuesday because I have to work to make a living. And yet they laugh at me. And yet they say, "Well, why did you take the position? When I first took this position, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't have to do that." But I have to work, as we all do. Because I don't make mon, we don't make money here. We make like a hundred dollars, a hundred twenty-five dollars. That's it. That's all. That's it. So we're not making money here, we have to work. So if I have to leave a few minutes early, the mayor threatened me, and I'm not even his employee. He threatened not to pay me if I had to leave and go to work a few minutes early. What is that? What is it? So again, we are here to do a job, we're here to do your business and my business as a resident. I am going to continue to do that. I am going to continue to fight for our resources. I'm going to continue to make sure that our village goes to where it has to go. But in order to do that, we have to change this administration. Vote April 1st, 2025. Make that change, so you can make that difference in this village. Thank you.
Okay. So now, we're into the, I don't know, I'm looking to see. First of all, and I don't know what side or whatever you want to say, but everyone should...
Point of the point of privilege, please.
Or you don't want to hear it?
No, no, I gotta go.
Go ahead. I understand. I understand. I just take your time. Only thing I'm saying is, well, what I'm trying to tell the public is, we're here supposedly, elected officials, to move this village forward. Anybody can point fingers, anybody can have their own opinion, that's where opinions are. They have their own opinion. But when you get up and waste people's time, that came out here to hear what you're trying to move, what you're trying to move forward, and all you hear is campaign speeches, pointing fingers, lying to people, because you figure if it comes up, I'll say something that's what it is. Instead of doing research, when you ask them about the research, "Well, what is this or what is that?", they don't know, they want, they still want you... This is a shame. I just wanted to say, I feel sorry that you had to sit through this election speech. I'm so sorry that you had to sit through the, you know, campaign speech, because that's all it is. Because if you make accusations without facts, that's all it is. And the election is in April 1st, and we're starting already in October. About what someone didn't do, anybody can keep on blaming it on other people. What have you done? What have you done to do anything? I mean, I don't, my name has been dragged through whatever, I didn't get elected for the money. I didn't get elected to have accolades, I got elected to make sure that some ideas that I had before I became a, even a trustee, that I can help formulate. That's what I got elected for. Not about money, I work here, I'm, well, I'm not working now, I'm retired, but it's not about money. So only thing I'm asking is you guys to, the ones with clear hair, back away a little bit and just really look and see what's going on. And it was named that so-and-so was running. I have, you got four people up here that are running for office, four. And if they get the, if the money or the increase comes, they would benefit from. We haven't had a raise in seventeen years, okay, well, are you elected to be, to make more money? Or are you elected to move the village forward? I just, I really don't, I, to this point in time, we don't understand why we, as a village, we can't go anywhere if we continue to keep going what we're doing now. You can blame me, I don't care. I know what I keep on doing, I know what I'm doing. So if that's, you feel good because, you know, this hasn't happened, the mayor hasn't done this, the mayor hasn't done that, okay, fine. But rest assured, when you look up at this administration, your neighbor be on that table. Your neighbor be part of this administration. All you got to do is when you go out and see the banner that's out there on South Trail, everyone's name is up there, that's part of this administration. So it behooves us to try to get along and move this administration. But if we don't want to do that, then we're going to continue to be here right where we are. We're going to continue to be right where we are. And I'm just sorry that you guys, this is not something that I'm saying for the first time, I said this a lot. I'm going to make sure that this village is not going to be taken away. Taken away as far as greedy people coming in, trying to take what they want, and instead of listening... Because I still yet to see some of these trustees that's been here for more than a year, still can't tell me certain things, where that's at, or what, even what a tiff is, what it is. I'm not talking about the words, what is it for and how does it operate? So only thing I'm saying, you guys, I'm sorry that you had to listen to this, to those that feel, and the ones that feel otherwise, okay, fine, you have your opinion. But I'm just telling you that we're supposed to be here to move this village forward. We're supposed to be here to take care of day-to-day business, not sit here and lie because it came out of your mouth, that's a lie, or this, or this is the way this happens. Do your research. Do your research on anybody, not just South Village that's been elected, or any person that's been elected that you have to vote for. Do your research. Find out what they're all about before you press that button to put them in that, put them in that seat. Because if then, if you don't, this is what you're going to have. This is exactly what you're going to have. See, but you don't talk, but you're not saying nothing. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All of the...